Let's pray. Lord, thank you for another opportunity to be on behalf of our city. We ask you once again for your wisdom and guidance as we strive to make the right decisions for our community and its citizens. We ask your blessing on all our elected officials, our city manager, our department heads and our employees, and most of all, the people of our community. Thank you for our esteemed guests and all those in attendance this evening. In Christ's name, amen.
(inaudible) 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 Motion received, filed minutes of regular meeting February 26, 2018. Regular meeting is March 8, 2018. Any discussion? All favor? Hearings reports, commissioners?
Just a quick welcome to everyone. We have a lengthy agenda and a full house of comments to remember today.
If you, I'll tell you now, if you're here for something that we get accomplished, feel free to go watch NCAA and call us, we, just call us back a little bit. But you, it'd be fine to orderly leave the room and not stick around to listen to mundane things which are important to a whole lot of people in our community, but maybe not each one of you, because I'm glad you're here. The main thing I want to do is, as I told some of my former staff members there, I don't feel like I'm outnumbered tonight in this room. I have a bunch of school teachers with me and I'm so proud they're here. You all come up front, please. Oh, you don't want to. I didn't know we had this mayor, I wouldn't ask you to come up. It's good to see you guys. I want to read proclamation. Support teachers and support our public voice. You include all my people in the city of Ashland and our people to the community, but you're also representing. Don't try to be teaching now, right here. But we appreciate the professionalism, the commitment, the dedication you always have to kids and families. And sometimes we do have to step out and do activities that you prefer not to be involved in, let other people deal with the politics of the state, of the area. Sometimes you have to be some kind of voice, and I can assure you, we were in Frankfurt a few weeks ago trying to represent our case on an opposed Senate Bill 1, as it's written. And I will editorialize a whole lot, but the same thing I told our legislators was that a lot of people did not do their job for 50 years or more, and now they want to try to do it in one fell swoop. And no one does that. How do you do it? The implications for the citizens of Ashland are unbelievable. You know, we've been, we've been projected $1.7 million increase in pension liability. We're very solvent in the city of Ashland. This commission, the city manager, this finance director, all our department heads, they could tighten up so much, pull together so much, and we've always done it. We can, we can survive that a little bit. It's every year, annually, from now on. And you know who ends up paying? The citizens of Ashland, taxpayers. You know, you can only do so much in providing public safety and water and sewer and garbage and streets and sidewalks. You can only do so much with what comes in. And I've tried to shake up as many of our citizens as I could to understand this isn't a school teacher problem, and it isn't a city government problem, it's everybody's problem. I'm very proud of every one of you hanging there. We're trying to do our part every day, trust me. We're not relaxing on this. And just to acknowledge and take this with you, that this commission, this mayor, I think I speak on behalf of the city government, and probably the vast majority of our citizens, probably all of them. A proclamation by Stephen Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Ashland. We're as teachers are the cornerstone of each and every community, providing our children their educational backgrounds and career path opportunities. We're as teachers and public servants affected by the potential change in benefits and retirement pensions, we're given a promise they would be supported and receive those benefits and retirement pensions which they earned after years of working in the educational and public sector fields. And we're as the city of Ashland supports our teachers in their efforts in Frankfurt in support of maintaining those earned benefits and retirement pensions. And we're as by supporting our teachers and public servants, our community is united in showing our support for the livelihood and well-being of our teachers and public servants. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Stephen Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Ashland, hereby proclaim Thursday, May 20, March 22, 2018, a Support for Teachers and Public Service Day in the City of Ashland. I encourage residents to recognize the positive impact our teachers and public servants have on our community, our families, and most importantly, our children. We thank them and we support them. God bless you. (applause) We appreciate the educator. Anyone else up here have anything? City manager?
Mayor, four quick things. CDBG Annual Election Plan, there's copies of it over there on the distribution table for the public to know in case you don't already. We'll have two more public hearings on, or public sessions Monday, 26 March, 11:00 AM at Hill Press Bruce Mission, and Wednesday, 11:00 April, 3:00 PM in the city building. Next thing is 29th Street update. There's been a, about a week and a half ago, a great update posted on the Facebook page and also on the city website. If you got any questions regarding that, please give us a call, but it's pretty detailed. How Can We Help version 2.0, just want to give a quick update on that. Appreciate the community utilizing that. We're up to 67 reports, 58 resolved, seven in progress, and two delayed for weather, so we're gaining a little momentum. We are learning as we go on that. There's been some disconnects on some reporting and we're working through that. And then finally, the tennis court. I know there's been some interest in that recently. As I briefed, I think last fall, we're waiting for sustained warm temperatures. We expect to be done by mid-April. Only thing they're going to be doing on that is doing the final surface leveling, painting the surface, and it'll be ready to go.
Any comments? City manager, report. Okay, this part of our meeting is public participation. If you have an item you'd like to bring before the board of commissioners, we'd ask you to give your name, address, and then your comments to five minutes or less. Do we, do we have somebody from? No?
John Maxwell, 2701 Forest Avenue in Ashland. I'm here for two reasons. One is a minor thing, but I've been trying for three years to get a stop sign. On both sides of the railroad alley of 25th Street where most of you just came from. It's a very busy street with the closing or partial closing of 29th Street. That's the next way to connect to Lexington Avenue. And I have turned in several of these pieces of paper to NALT, so hopefully someone will do something about that. All the other intersections on railroad alley do have stop signs. But more importantly, I'm here to talk about Belmont. I know you're tired of hearing about it, and so am I, but someone has got to maintain Belmont Avenue daily. Today, fire trucks, I was driving a city vehicle, others that go up and down Belmont are faced with deep hot holes in various places, and it can't be handled once a week. It's got to be taken care of on a daily basis, just like you watered the plants more the summer. Someone has to do this. And it is the only emergency group, literally, for ambulances, fire trucks, whatever, to get to South Ashland. So hopefully someone's listening and will take care of it, not just for me, but for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Maxwell.
I was hoping we'd see some boxes of cookies. I mean, I was hoping against hope, President.
Tag along sword. Yeah, I think everybody should come up and support you there. We welcome you all being at the commission meeting, so just relax.
Hello. Ashland Ashland Girl Scout troop 1100. I want to discuss with you about our recycling pamphlet. Our pamphlet says how long some materials take to decompose, reasons to recycle, and more information about recycling. To recycle, you don't always have to go to a recycling center. You're able to make crafts out of recycled products. For example, you can reuse an old sweater and make a rug. Some materials can take over 1 million years to decompose. A milk or juice carton takes five years to decompose, and a plastic bag takes 200 to 1,000 years to decompose. Glass and styrofoam are the materials that take 1 million years or more to decompose. If you do not want to recycle, then at least throw away your trash. On our pamphlet is a landfill. There are tons of materials you could recycle in there. If more people were to recycle, then the landfill will be half its size. A few good reasons to recycle are because it's good for the environment, prevents global warming, saves energy, and creates jobs. I hope to see more people recycling soon.
We do too. We thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Any other Girl Scout or sponsor?
We, the Girl Scouts, 1100, are here because we are worried about our planet Earth and what we can do to help keep it clean and healthy. We would like to present to you an idea about one way our city can help our planet, and that is to promote recycling.
Great, great. Anyone else?
Recycling saves our resources. If more people recycle, it reduces the number of resources needed to make products that we use. This can save many for us helping our planet. Recycling reduces the amount of garbage. This can be great to help our city, taking up less space and needing less land for neighbors. Recycling is cost-effective and can, in many ways, save the city life. We know that our city participates in recycling. As Girl Scouts, we would like to help make a plan of action introducing our ideas of how we can promote and encourage more people to participate in recycling. Maybe if it were easier and promoted more, then more people would get involved. We believe that recycling would be good for our city, our resources, and our planet. 1100 would like to help be a part of this situation.
Anyone else?
So currently, we only have two places that we can recycle, which is under the Blue 12th Street Bridge and the park on 39th Street, where you can drop off plastic bottles and jugs, paper, cardboard, and aluminum and steel cans. The acceptable items are placed in the bins and emptied by rumpkey. People can, you all can help by only recycling things that are listed and don't just drop your trash in these bins and just encourage other people to recycle.
You see, we talked a lot about recycling here. Everyone up here is very supportive. We appreciate you being here and sharing that. The most important thing about 1100 doing this is that there are so many people in our town, in our country, who weren't raised thinking about recycling. So it's kind of a, it's something they have to be aware of and trained on and heard from, but you all can have some major impact with other kids, kids in your school, kids when you're at big Girl Scout get-togethers, you know, and talk about. Each of you, when you go home, try to encourage your parents, grandparents, uncles and aunts to recycle. And you can be a little catalyst. You'll be somebody that makes that thing start happening in your own families. So maybe you will help it make, it start happening in your school that you attend. We're trying to make it happen throughout the community, so we have a lot of people who are, they never recycle, that just thought they always just throw everything in the same can and take it out. It's easier that way for them, I'm assuming. And one of the things I've found, my wife and I, are that we almost don't need a garbage can anymore. Maybe one bag goes in there and a bunch of other bags go under the bridge. Most of what we end up with in our homes is recycled, not garbage. It's a small amount. And of course, for the city's behalf, we pay by the ton to have garbage taken somewhere. We also pay to have recycling taken, but it also, we get a, we get a payback on that because they use it. So it's much cheaper for us to recycle than it is to haul to the dump. So it is not only going to save all of your parents and relatives money, the more everybody recycles, it'll make the environment better for everybody, people that come after us. And I heard that in some of what you had to say. We appreciate 1100 being here, hope you'll come back again, and hope you, you'll have, you have an impact on us and we're on your team. We're for the same thing. I want you to go and make impact on others that'll think the same way. Think you can do that?
You all are pretty brave to come up before us and present this. We're so proud of you and you've, you've made a big impact on me, I know, just coming here today. As I'm sitting here thinking of the things that we can do, Girl Scouts learn very quickly that you lead by example, don't you? And one thing we can probably do better in our city is have bins out for recycling. I think even on Winchester Avenue, we have a lot of trash cans, but I don't know that we have any recycling cans right next to our trash bins. I know we have them in Central Park. Maybe that's a good first step for us as a city to do, to lead by example. We probably can look into that, maybe you all can help us check on that. Okay? Thank you, students.
Good job.
You made an impact on me, Joe. Take 40 pounds for those last cookies.
Thank you all. Thanks for being here. (applause) Anyone else like to appear before the commission? We appreciate it. Old business, out of A.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting and enacting supplements S-64, S-65, and S-66, and S-67 to the color of ordinances, City of Ashland.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, directing the mayor to execute a contract with Brentag Mint South Inc. for purchase of liquid chlorine, price $490 per ton, liquid caustic soda, price $1.08 per gallon, sodium hypochlorite, price $0.78 per gallon, and sulfur dioxide, price of $665 per ton, for Department of Engineering Utilities, Division of Water Production, Waste Water Treatment.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, directing the mayor to execute a contract with Chemtrade Chemicals, US LLC, for the purchase of polyaluminum chloride, unit price $1.336 per gallon, for the Department of Engineering Utilities, Division of Waste Water Treatment, Water Production.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, directing the mayor to execute a contract with CI Thornburg Company Inc. for the purchase of sand, unit price $18.00 per pound, Department of Engineering Utilities, Division of Waste Water Treatment, Water Production.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, directing the mayor to execute a contract with Polydean Inc. for the purchase of liquid polymer at the water treatment plant at a price of $9.89 per gallon, liquid polymer wastewater treatment plant, price $10.14.8 per gallon, and polymer cationic at a price of $1.55 per pound, Department of Engineering Utilities, Division of Waste Water Treatment, and Water Production.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, directing the mayor to execute a contract with S-4 Water Sales and Service LLC, purchase of powdered activated carbon at a unit price of $0.95 per pound, hydrofluoric acid at a price $2.88 per gallon, Department of Engineering Utilities, Division of Waste Water Treatment, and Water Production.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, directing the mayor to execute a contract with UNMR USA Inc., purchase liquid sodium permanganin at a price $7.88.48 per gallon, potassium permanganin, price $2.00 per pound, for the Department of Engineering Utilities, Division of Waste Water Treatment, and Water Production.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, directing the mayor to execute a contract with Use Alco LLC for the purchase of aluminum sulfate, price of $87.69 per gallon, for the Department of Engineering Utilities, Division of Water Production, and Waste Water Treatment.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, directing the mayor to execute Task Order 218, 2018, 1 between the city and HDR Engineering Inc. regarding Phase 2 Stormwater MS4 Compliance Report in the amount of $3,100.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, approving Change Order 2 between the city and Engineering Associates PSC regarding their proposals for drafting design work completed in three phases for the new water distribution and sewer maintenance facilities located at Mill Street and 28th Street by increasing the amended proposal in the amount of $2,670 for drafting of a revised site plan for the Department of Engineering Utilities, Division of Water Distribution, and Waste Water Collection.
Any discussion? All favor?
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, directing the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement between Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and City of Ashland for the Ashland Safe Routes to school, federal project, Department of Engineering Utilities, extending the project to June 30, 2018.
Mr. Eastwood, does that mean that we have phones still available for sidewalks to certain areas of schools?
Yes, actually, the work has already been done, and Kentucky Transportation Cabinet has agreed to this extension. We have to agree to it.
This is to build a retaining wall for a citizen that wasn't identified as part of the first go-around, so this extends it so we can fix that issue.
Okay, thanks. All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, directing the mayor to execute a five-year extension to the Housing Assistant Payments Contract between the city, Harbor Hill, LL, LP regarding the US Department of Housing and Urban Development Project-Based Assistance House Choice Voucher Program for the Department of Community and Economic Development, adopted Ordinance 104, Series 2009.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, approving Change Order 1 between the city and Morris Contracting, increasing the contract amount by $15,180, contract regarding the Deboard Terrace Concrete and Handrail Project for the Department of Community and Economic Development through the Housing and Urban Development Community Development Blocks Plan.
All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing, directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the city and Boyd County Sanitation District Number 4, repealing Ordinance 102, Series 2009.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting Housing Choice Voucher Program 2018, Annual Administrative Plan for the City of Ashland, Department of Community and Economic Development, Division Assistant Housing Section 8.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting the comprehensive regulations for the licensing and operation of establishments for the sale of alcoholic beverages within the city, providing for the responsibilities of the city alcoholic beverage control administrator, repealing Ordinance 101, 10, Series 2013, and any amendments thereto.
Any discussion? All favor? All opposed, like sign.
This ordinance will need to die for life of the motion, because we've got another ordinance on that changes the ads and things that were left out. Ordinance, City of Ashland, Kentucky, establishing guidelines and procedures for contributions by the City of Ashland, repealing Ordinance 54, Series 2001.
I hear no motion, advise for leave of motion. Any other old business? Consent agenda.
Resolution, City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing, approving, in the course of action presented by Steve Manager on items appearing on the consent agenda, regular meeting Board of City Commissioners, March 22, 2018.
Any discussion? All favor? All favor? Oppose, like sign. New business out of A.
Order, City of Ashland, Kentucky establishing guidelines and procedures for contributions by the city, repealing Ordinance 54, Series 2001, declaring an emergency to exist to allow two readings of the ordinance on the same day.
Any discussion? All favor? Oppose, like sign. Motion suspended rules. Any discussion? All favor? Oppose, like sign. Out of B.
No, second reading.
Or written twice.
Oh, you suspended the rules.
Motion final adoption.
There you go.
Any discussion? All favor? Thanks, Council.
You're welcome.
I'll tell you, be right there until we go. Out of B.
Order, City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute a contribution in aid of construction agreement for the electric distribution service between the city and Kentucky Power Company. Installation of seven power poles and one phase tap for new service to the log town water storage tank at East Park, Department of Engineering Utilities, that cost $4,708.20.
Any other business to assist Brady Industries?
Actually, no. It's for disentangement by product removal of that last tank all the way up by I-64.
Okay. Thanks, Ron. All favor? Oppose, like sign. Out of C.
Order, City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing approving change order two between the city and Tribute Contracting and Construction LLC for contract regarding 29th Street Stormwater Separation Project, increasing the contract by $52,860 for the Department of Engineering and Utilities.
Any discussion?
Can we get an overview for the public's sake of what this is and why?
Thank you, Commissioner. This pays for the installation of an eight-inch gravity sewer across Belmont along Guyer. It's detailed in the item details on your iPad. The unforeseen condition was the discovery of an uncharted raw sewer line that had to be redirected, so this was not on any of the city maps or plans. It had to be dealt with as part of the overall project.
In doing this, we'll obviously save us problems later on.
Especially NOBs.
Yeah.
To take care of. It's part of the greater CSO.
All favor? Oppose, like sign. Out of D.
Orders of the Board of City Commissioners, City of Ashland, creating the Division Recreation, Division Park Maintenance, creating the Board of Park Commissioners, providing for the enforcement of members thereof, repealing all power recreation commissions and boards of park commissioners. Ordinance Number 27, Series 1999.
Just kind of cleans things up. The park board gave it their blessing, puts the riverfront under their purview in all other parks and just does away with the tree board. The park board has the authority that the tree board used to have, cleans things up.
All favor? Oppose, like sign. Out of E.
Order, City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing directing the mayor to execute an agreement with A&amp;J Properties, installation waterline extension outside city limits at Rucker Mobile Home Park located near Summit Road and Little Gardner Road.
Cost? Just $26,000 is paid for by the Rucker Mobile Home Park.
So the city's being reimbursed for the expense. I saw it there. Being outside, we, we, right, just fix it up.
All favor? Oppose, like sign. Out of M.
Order, City of Ashland, Kentucky amending Section 5, Ordinance 21, Series 2012, commonly known, referred to as a side ordinance regarding regulations on outdoor advertising. This is the, adds the LED billboard regulation.
Mr. Pullman? Does this do anything to reflect on the dreaded outdoors, outdoor signs that I have to test in the city limits?
So this is part of how we're going to move forward. What this will do is if a business would like to put in an LED board, they're required to remove four boards with that, I believe it's 600 feet, I think, of the LED board.
That's a good step. Thanks. All favor? Oppose, like sign. Out of G.
Order, City of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing the reclassification Director of Engineering Utilities to position City Engineering Capital Development Director. Authorizing the reclassification Public Works Director to position Public Director or position Director of Public Services and Utilities Operations. Adopting replacement job descriptions for all positions in the affected departments. Adopting the revised authorized positions listing to reflect the reorganization of policies and procedures, compensation plan, classification plan, as adopted to Ordinance 51, Series 2017, as previously amended.
Any discussion? All favor? Oppose, like sign. Any other new business? Anybody? Any personnel matter with the executive session on? We'll do a motion and order the executive session on individual personnel. Only individual personnel will be discussed, no action will be taken. You can stick around, we'll come back out, we're going to adjourn the meeting, but whoever wants to. Thanks for being here tonight. See you. Okay. The executive session is 6:36. We return at 6:45. Only individual personnel is discussed and no action will be taken. Motion adjourned. Second. We adjourn. Thanks for being here. Continue.